And then they've switched the all the long term people using. Those lots right by the river, they open them up, they're not.
Is that right?
Long, no long term lease, it's only.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It was some upset, but we were on on the side of it, so we're all right. I could probably see that coming. But they did increase their mortgage.
Thirty nine percent. They did upgrade some of the amenities.
Well, did they?
The internet's so much.
Oh, good, good.
Starlink now.
Really?
Mm hmm.
Good, glad to hear that.
I think they've been, they've been working on some of the docs, replacing some of the boards that are getting old and rotting. Okay. We'll call to order the regular city council meeting for May thirteenth, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Label. Thank you, welcome all, roll call. She.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
I am present.
Councilmember Spett.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Present.
Councilmember Belloc.
Present.
Councilmember LeVar.
Present.
Councilmember Postner.
Present.
And I do have a request to excuse council member Overhauser for this evening's meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion of second to excuse council member Overhauser, all in favor say aye.
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 Oh, she's excused, and I also have a request to excuse council member Nazaro from this evening's meeting and also the twenty seventh of May meeting.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, motion of second to excuse council member Nazaro from this evening's meeting and May twenty seventh. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just a quick note that I requested the twenty seventh as well.
Uh, yes, I think that one was already approved last, last council meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
I believe, I'll double check on that, though, I think it was, yeah. Okay, this is the part of the agenda where we offer up comment from our citizens, uh, we did have two people sign up, uh, Chris Babcock. And so, protocol is, please state your name and your address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes, thank you.
Um, Chris Babcock, two six zero eight Wheaton Lane, I'm here for, as a private citizen, but also for the park board. Um, we just had a concern about the dog park, and we really appreciate Paul coming to all the. Park board meetings and helping us with the dog park, we've been getting, and the reason why I came tonight is because it's kind of an emergency. We've had a lot of, and I've got pictures if you want to see them. Um, we have a lot of rusty nails that are coming up through the ground in the dog park. And so a lot of the, uh, members of the community are concerned and sending. Um, pictures of these rusty nails and we're afraid that the dogs pause, that they're going to get hurt. And we've been working with Paul of what we're going to do with the dog park, we were gonna. rake it up, and so we were trying to get all that up, but we might need to move up the. Um, timeline a little faster because, um, this could be a problem for, the dogs might start getting hurt.
Um, if we, we talked about this as a staff, we're talking about getting a magnetic sort of roller.
Oh, that's awesome.
Try and pick up all these nasty rusty nails.
Perfect.
We will try to get on that as soon as possible.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. Uh, Kit Frenchzich. Did I say that right? France, what's that?
Franzik.
Franzik, sorry.
Hit Franzik, uh, nine oh five Golden Hills. Um, first, I want to thank Mayor Grover and Todd for coming out to the site, uh. And sharing a lot of information and, uh, kind of helping him keep us informed. Um, we're looking forward to the, uh, comments on the new, uh, plan that the home developer is doing. And, uh, we did want to share two days ago, after the rain, about nine o'clock, what the, uh, end of that pipe looked like. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And this is, you said two days ago?
Yep.
Sunday.
Thank you.
You can ask it, like.
Yeah. Okay, even though we did have some folks sign up, I do want to offer it up to anybody that's in the crowd today, if they wish to speak. Raise your hand or my attention. How about anybody that's joining us virtually? Going once, going twice. Thank you very much, let's move on to the minutes from our April twenty second, uh, city council meeting. You've had an opportunity to review them, and if there's no corrections, I'd accept the motion to approve them.
Same.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve our regular city council meeting minutes from April twenty second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay. Vince, were you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, said aye.
Okay, thank you, our, uh, meeting minutes are approved. Vouchers and payroll, Cindy.
Total vouchers of three million twenty nine thousand four hundred one dollar and thirty cents, that is made up of. Um, regular expenditures of two million nine hundred forty eight thousand two hundred one dollar and eighty one cents. And there's one thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars and forty nine cents in manual issued. Uh, April payroll was meant one million three hundred twenty eight thousand one hundred fifty two dollars and twenty eight cents.
Thank you.
Your honor, the finance committee reviewed the expenditures, and I move to approve the expenditures in the mail reported.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve the vouchers and payroll as presented. Any questions for Cindy from our council? All in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay, thank you Cindy, vouchers and payroll are approved. Uh, we did have some claims for damages for Mr. Gould.
Yes, your honor, the finance committee reviewed this, and, uh, due to the extent of the amount of the claim. We're recommending that, uh, the claim and all, uh, information be submitted to. Washington City's insurance authority for their review and recommendation. And make that as a motion.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to submit, uh, Mr. Thomas Gould's claim to the WCIA for further review. All in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay. Thank you, we'll go ahead and submit that right away to WCIA. I can see the small contracts, there were two of them that I signed, uh, rock placing company for the Aquatic Center retaining wall and a dewdrop landscaping Willowood Village repair. Next, uh, there's an information item, I'd like to read a proclamation, and thank you, Mr. Lucas, for, uh, preparing this.
Thank you, honorable Mayor Grover, we have the, uh, therapeutic court team, your K D court team.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Okay. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and read this, this is from the office of the mayor of the city of Cheney proclamation, whereas therapeutic courts improve both public health and public safety. Using evidence-based practices to support individuals and families affected by substance abuse. And other behavioral health conditions in making long-term changes that create safer, healthier communities and benefit us all. And whereas the Washington State Department of Social and Health Services found that cost savings due to crime reductions created a four dollar return on every dollar and tax dollar invested. In the Washington State Drug Court. An analysis of mental health courts and family treatment courts in Washington State have shown savings from reduced recidivism. Lower rates of hospitalization, fewer emergency department visits, less involvement in the child welfare system, and fewer children born drug affected. And whereas therapeutic, therapeutic court participants and alumni create positive ripple effects in the community. Inspiring hope and giving back as productive employees. Present parents, good neighbors, dedicated mentors, and effective role models for others in recovery. And whereas therapeutic courts have an upstream impact. Interrupting generational cycles of substance abuse and legal involvement. And helping to prevent adverse childhood experiences associated with parental substance abuse. Substance use, sorry, incarceration and foster care and treatment courts facility, community-wide partnerships. Bringing together public safety and public health. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Cheney, Washington, do hereby claim the month of May as treatment court month. Been witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and do hereby encourage all residents to embrace treatment court. In our city this thirteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty five. Wonderful. Did you have anything to say, Mr. Lucas?
This is a. Have a brief statement if I can.
Yes, please, Corey.
Mayor Grover and honorable city council members, I'd like to thank you for your ongoing support of the Cheney therapeutic court. I'm proud to serve as a coordinator for the therapeutic court program, and I work alongside Beth Earl, our compliance clerk. Therapeutic courts work hand in hand with our participants to resolve their criminal cases. Alongside intensive substance use and mental health treatment and case management. To that end, we work closely as part of a multidisciplinary team that includes our court staff, medical and clinical professionals, and the Cheney Police Department. Our program has seen significant growth, and I'm happy to share that we were able to celebrate six graduates last year. These graduates worked hard to transform their lives, overcome addiction, and give back to their community. Participants gained employment, housing, and stability while also volunteering more than two hundred hours at community nonprofits. We already have had two new graduates since January of this year, and we look forward to celebrating another four in July. I invite all of you to join us this July for their graduation. And to see the ability of therapeutic courts to change lives, improve outcomes, and increase community safety, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, on behalf of the citizens of Cheney, we appreciate the, the work that you're putting into this and how it's going to really have an impact on our community, thank you very much. Okay, we have some action items, ladies and gentlemen, so let's just get right to it, our first one, uh, Mr. Lucas, is the resolution three F three sixty two. Court security upgrade contract award, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, honorable Mayor Grover and city council, so we had, uh, this was actually the second round, we put out, uh, three, uh, sealed bids. We received three bids back, one clearly was the best and lowest as well. So I don't necessarily know how you want me to announce that, but, uh, Camtech was the one who had the lowest bid as well as offered the greatest. Uh, benefits, they had the longest warranties and the, what looks to be the best long time service.
Perfect. Thank you, any questions for Dave on the upgrade contract award for court security?
Well, I know we got just under nineteen thousand grant funds from the state and. Steve is.
Generously kicking in the.
Kick in the balance. Always good. So I'm, I'm pleased that we can get some more security.
Yeah. And, and I am a little bit sorry that we went over, but what had happened was, as I started to say, we did one, and then we went over the threshold, so then we had to do seal bids. In that time period, the foundation had agreed to pay the first amount, but the price went up when we did.
Time around, they, they get to see everyone's cards.
Yeah, so.
Right, so it's, it's, it's responsive.
Yeah, and I think I've talked to Mark about it, I mean, I think the ultimate goal is to really do the whole system, and it really, this allows us, will allow us to integrate. Um, it'll also improve some of the things that we have that have gone out of date, like the security system you have there, there's one up front, um, you know, the camera system, I mean, that'll. It'll really help modernize and really meet some of the state requirements that we've missed from security inspections, so.
Thank you, Dave, any other questions, comments for Dave? What's your pleasure?
I'll move for the passage of resolution F dash three six two.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to pass resolution F three six two, the court security upgrade contract award, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, thank you, Dave, resolution F three six two passes. Mr. Marks, resolution F three sixty three Eagle Sports Properties sponsorship agreement, go for it, Steve.
Evening, Mayor, evening, council, uh, this is a two-year marketing and sponsorship agreement with Eagle Sports Properties. Which promotes athletics at Eastern Washington University, we've had this partnership for several years. Uh, this past year, we paid seventy five hundred dollars, it, what is that, about a seven percent increase to next year, eight thousand dollars, and this is for academic years. We signed the contract here in July. It takes effect here for this fall season, then we make the payment first of the year of twenty twenty six, so the funds will be distributed in twenty twenty six and then twenty twenty seven. And the funds come from the B P A rebate program itself. More rebates come in, we receive an administrative commission on handling those, and those funds go to pay for this, so. Putting all the money back into the community in one fashion or another. I gave, uh, everybody a handout there, what that sign will be in the basketball arena. Uh, if you have any comments or you want to make some changes, please let me know, otherwise I'll tell them that that will be it, nobody placed existing one. And in this agreement, it gives announcements at the football game, uh, assigned in the arena, and then there's four season tickets for the football games. That are used within the city. Having said that, I'm seeking approval for the two years of twenty five, twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven, and sixteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars total. And I'll budget this for next year's budget this fall.
Any questions? Thanks, Steve.
I guess.
Um, can you give me an example of what some of these, um, improvements are that are covered by this?
Someone replaces windows, insulation, heat pumps, uh, generators. Some of the bigger ones was ADM mill, we, uh, they have big generators that create these blowers to separate the wheat from the chaff. And then we put these governors on them, and it saved them fifty thousand near electricity.
It's really all about energy efficiency.
Yeah. Energy efficiency, so.
Yeah, switching to windows.
And like what, what Steve has done here, promoting our program, um, making sure the entire community is aware that these rebates are up.
Yeah.
I, I like that as well, because we've had comments that a lot of people didn't know. They were eligible for some of these, and this is one really good way to, to get the word out, so I, I support it.
Anybody else? Open for a motion?
I'll, I'll go for approval of resolution F dash three six three.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three sixty three, the sponsorship agreement for Eagle Sports. All in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay, thank you, Steve, resolution F three sixty three passes.
He's been doing this for many years.
Many years, and it's, and it's good that we're changing up the banner this year, because we've had the same banner up for, what, four or five years now? The, the verbiage. Okay, the next is going to be the Todd show, so, resolution F three sixty four, this is Department of Commerce Purple Pipe Project Funding Amendment B.
I would like to use the excuse, my dog ate my homework, but my, my, my computer does not work right, I'm, 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 so I got two devices here, so. I will try to move as quickly as we can before I, I have a blackout screen here, but, uh, basically, this is just an agreement to extend. The DOC agreement, that's our grant dollars, that was original eleven million that we had, I have a bucket amount of about a hundred thousand, and I'd like to keep it. Uh, we're starting to draw from ecology, there are some items that will come up that, that really is loan. Um, so I want that flexibility, we will spend it before the project's over, projected to be in November this year. But it will be, go beyond the, the June thirtieth deadline, so we just, uh, uh, reached out to DOC, and they're, they're willing to extend it through, uh, next October twenty twenty six, so it's just an amendment to extend the agreement. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd, any questions for?
Does that help with fitting in eligible items that is one pot of money easier to use?
Exactly, I mean, and you understand, we, we ordered, we ordered the, uh, the UV system and the filter, and they came with some, some, huh, some commissioning type things that, that we looked at, um, so, and that was. Prior to a, a lot of different things, so those type of things, if there's any extra design that we may need to, to take a look at as we move forward. Um, to the ecology was just for construction only, so I just don't know what's out there right now, but as soon as we're, we're into that, maybe that final, that's where I'll probably spend the remaining of.
So it'll give us time, but no more money.
Yeah. Still got to shake the trees for more money. Anything else?
I'll let someone else make a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution F three sixty four, second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three sixty four, Department of Commerce Purple Pipe Project Funding Amendment B. Any final questions or comments?
Just, your honor, just one quick final comment, I'm going to abstain from this as a member of the consultant team, so.
Okay. Thank you, Vince. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
One abstention, so, eyes have it, resolution F three sixty four passes, thank you, Todd. Next is, uh, resolution F three sixty six, and this is an interlocal agreement with one of our great partners, Spokane Transit Authority for the Elm Street project, go ahead.
Exactly, we, we're, we're getting more and more of this, is where, uh, we're kind of partnering Elm Street, obviously, uh, from Washington down to, uh, North Sixth Street is a major transit area. So when we have the preservation project, we got EW involved, we also got STA involved, they want to make some modifications on the, on the street itself, uh, including a turnout, so. Uh, what we've done is we've gone out to bid for our project, and we, we put in a separate bid schedule for STA, this interlocal agreement just allows. Not only this, but future ones, they did put three million dollars in this, so. Anytime we do work on arterials, or maybe come to us when we have a project that they want to put something in, we can contract for it, they'll pay for the design. And the construction administration, so basically that's what it is, is an interlocal agreement.
Thanks, Todd, any questions for Todd on this? Uh, this, uh, interlocal agreement?
So this doesn't. Have any dollar figure yet?
No, it's, uh, the, the agreement reads is that STA will give us like a project scope. And then we will, and they will get authorization to, uh, design and construct it and improve it, and it's based on, uh, they just put this three million dollars in, so any future project. We're estimating right now, we haven't received the bids, we'll open the bids on Tuesday, uh, but we're kind of estimating this project to be right around a hundred thousand.
But they have three millions in.
That, that's just an earmark.
Oh.
I, I know what you.
I think we got a board member here, maybe we should take it up. Think else we can get out of that deal?
I will be at the STA board meeting on Thursday.
Yeah.
But it'll be too late.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it is. It is. Accept a motion?
I'll go with approval of resolution F three six six.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three sixty six, the Elm Street Spokane Transit Authority Interlocal Agreement, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three six six passes. Moving on, don't go anywhere. Resolution F three sixty seven, the Cheney Aquatics Center Playground Project.
Yes, I'm not gonna, this is a kind of a standalone change order. I'm not coming with you bad news about soil conditions or anything else. So this is a, we have this opportunity where we have removed the existing playground in Haglen Park and it was in the construction. And we pushed the pool out so the playground had to come back and we need to reestablish that playground outside the fenced area of the aquatics there. But in doing so, we want to tie it into our paving pathways to meet ADA requirements. And we're also proposing that we use this new surface play that is relatively new. It's the same surface play that we're we're putting in the corner of the aquatics facility as well. So in order to put that playground back, we've been talking with Northwest Playgrounds and we felt that they could give us a pretty good deal on just upgrading that whole playground. So we asked Walker to put some numbers together and that's for basically creating the whole playground, putting the curbing in, putting the new surfacing on, and putting a brand new play structure in there. With that play structure allows two to twelve year olds on that on that surface. So it's it's just a new recommendation. It's just seeing if we want to do that into the Walker contract and go from there. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. The breakdown is is within the proposed.
Thanks, Todd. Go ahead, Jerky.
So when I was looking through it and I was looking at the playground that's being purchased, was any consideration given to like children of different abilities? Or different like, I guess, needs for being able to play? Like the playground itself looks really great and fantastic. I was just wondering if there's going to be any other amenities that are gonna.
You know, as we as we lay out the design and everything else, we haven't kind of discussed that. We're just kind of focused on the on the speed of it. But I think the the size of it and what we can additionally put in there, certainly, we'd probably take a look at that.
Anything else, Mark?
Yeah, I've got one, Todd.
I'm sorry, Mark. Go ahead.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Todd, I was just wondering if Parks and Rec has been brought into the conversation about any vision for the entire park? Or are we just at the beginning stages here?
I I I know that early in the design with the aquatics facility, when we when we actually, you know, set the aquatics facility on that, we started brainstorming how to utilize some other grounds around like around the tennis courts. But we haven't really formally brought up a true visioning and I think that could come as we're doing the comprehensive plan and and kind of the the Parks Plan Update. So, yeah, to answer your question, no, we really haven't brought anybody in to really take a hard look at it, but has been some discussions. I mean, there's been some drawings of of expanding the tennis courts, maybe to pickleball courts across the street. And then doing, you know, just some some other amenities within the within Haglen Park area.
Yeah. All right, I I think it'd be great to pull Parks and Rec in on it and just get some vision about oh, more overall vision for the whole thing. And then where we would go with that. And then second, have we gotten any other bids for it? Just to me, it seemed a little high, but maybe this is the going rate for a park structure. But I was just wondering if we had any other bids so that we could maybe look at whether Walker's bid is is high or low or medium or what?
Well, Walker, you know, we were we were gathering all the all the estimates of what we needed on. The only thing that that we were aware of is Northwest Playground's bid that they're already putting in the pool in that one corner. So we would, we took a look at that same price as far as the surfacing goes. And then we started looking around at at playground equipment in there. And obviously, when you see that playground, they they do have a discount for it. No, it's it's very hard to even get qualified. They have to be certified in in playground to install it. So Northwest was was just kind of there and going out for bid, yeah, we could go out for bid to see what we would get. But I I probably would be, it could be even higher. And and we're trying to capitalize on Northwest Playground coming in and preparing the surface on the pool side. And they'll be in there to maybe save a mobilization cost so they can move right over on the other side. So we're just kind of capitalizing on that.
Okay, thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Mark.
Question, and we're not, this is totally separate from the pool financials and everything.
Yes.
I know, we again, we talked about it in finance too, where senior reported, we have bought eighty thousand in park mitigation funds that could go towards this. And the other, the balance poss- possibly for REIT, real estate excise tax, or the last one would be parks cash. And as a further note, I don't know, Chris, I think we talked about this in Park Board where I know there was concern with the old playground equipment. It was rather large for little small children that are typically used it. And I like Jackman's comment too, where you can, there's certain swings since it's going to be ADA accessible. I've seen certain swings you can put in that all kids could use. So I'm, and I really like the idea of using the the rubber mat instead of wood chips and that mess. It would be a good one to see how this works out. I support it and I I agree with Mark on, I too look at it as far as anything we do looks expensive. But I think that's the going rate nowadays, but to have that get in, I suppose it'll be sometime after the pool's complete. Yeah, they'll move right over and work on that. And then we have the old one that we need to re- erect something.
So we've talked about moving that to Hipper Park to replace the H playground equipment. So it's kind of a win win.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was just wondering, do we have a plan of where the funds are coming from? You mentioned REIT and is there, is that what we're planning on in the park?
For the parks mitigation, we would like to use a majority of that.
Is that expiring?
Yeah, well, it's not expiring right now, but we want to make sure we get that money spent right away, then move in and look at it, read. And like Paul said last, sort of any difference to use a parks cash. But I very comfortable that we can make this happen.
Okay, okay.
Good discussion. Anything else?
I move for passive Resolution F dash three six seven.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to pass Resolution F three sixty seven, the Cheney Aquatics Center Playground Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a thank you, Todd. Resolution F three sixty seven passes. Okay, Resolution F three sixty eight, this is the Water Department Generator Maintenance Agreement.
Yeah, it's it's just the, we had a previous three year agreement and that that is expiring. So we are just going to up that for another three years with our cat leadership, since we do have cat generators in there. Not too much of a change over the three years compared to the last, but I just recommend you to continue that service.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Questions for Todd? Renewing the contract?
Got a housekeeping. You have to exercise your generators.
Yes.
Take them off for a while.
That's for sure.
I move to approve Resolution F three sixty eight.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three sixty eight, the Water Department Generator Maintenance Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a thank you, Todd. Resolution F three sixty eight passes. Moving on, Resolution F three sixty nine, the Aquatic Center Building Commissioning Contract. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, so we were, it was brought to our attention that that this is kind of a third party commissioning. It is a requirement under the the two thousand eighteen WCI, the Energy Code, Worship State Energy Code. And it was, it's also under, and it states in here the IBC, but it's actually the ICC. So I did look that up and and there are some exemptions. I don't think we fall under so many of those exemptions. But that was just something that 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 came up and that we decided to get a quote. Kaufman Engineers was really the only one we got. We we received another quote that was almost double that price, I believe. But Kaufman was our lowest quote that we could find in in the short amount of time. So that would be for commissioning some of the the water tanks and the heaters and everything else and the lighting to that end. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Comments, questions?
Well, Your Honor, I reviewed this and I kind of a new thing for me and I think the contract's fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And I'm confused, so I would rather have the Public Works Committee take a look at this and I'd like to have Mac kind of report to us on what and why. I understand the energy code, blah, 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 but this one's escaping me as far as we the Labor Department of Labor and Industries does inspection for electrical. We do our own plumbing inspection at HVAC. Now we have to get a commission, which again, they'll have to explain it to me. And I'm sure they will, but I would rather have some more information on it and we'll bring it back in plenty of time for the because I don't think it's going to take long to commission a hot water tank. So that would be my motion to defer this to the Public Works Committee.
I'll second.
Review.
And next Public Works Committee is this Thursday, is that right?
Be the twenty second with.
Next Thursday.
We bumped it, yeah.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
We're gonna, I was gonna bring that up in staff report.
What's your thoughts? Is that a something we want to defer? If we've got time to get some more information, it's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so as long as everybody's okay with bringing it, motion and second to defer Resolution F three sixty nine to our next, defer it to Public Works Committee for further review and NAC review. And then bring it back at our next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Todd, we'll move that to the next one.
Thank you.
That's up. You're done. Have a seat. Okay, Mark, you're next. Resolution F three seventy, this is the conflict waiver with Payne Hamblin, PS.
Yes, so Payne Hamblin is actually the contract legal law firm that provides legal services to the city of Airway Heights. And in particular, Dan Gibbons is their representative, kind of like Mike was when he was employed by both Witherspoon Kelly and Holly Troxell. So what this resolution does is it approves a conflict waiver as the city of Cheney and the city of Airway Heights and and also the city of Medical Lake talk about how we could collaborate together on the provision of court services. You heard a lot tonight about the successes of our therapeutic court and community court model. And I think all three cities have an interest in looking at ways that we could provide an even higher level of of court services. So we would like the the two lawyers, Mr. Capon and then Mr. Gibbons, who is also Mike's sort of backup with us here if he if he can't be here, to be able to work together to just put our heads together and see how we could enhance the the court services that we provide to the, I'll just say the West Plains area. So I'm bringing this forward to you tonight. Mike can answer any of the more legal legal term terminology in there, but I think this is a very good thing, very kind of proactive thing going forward for us to enhance the level of service. And and I will say, you know, I guess, you know, further our intent to to really change lives.
Thanks, Mark. And this kind of goes along with the last few years, we've been trying to collaborate as much as possible with our sister cities. Mike, Mark, or Mike, did you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, not not too much. I mean, Dan is my backup. He was my partner for fourteen years at Witherspoon Kelly. He represents Airway Heights. Be because he represents Airway Heights, there's a potential that he could have a conflict of interest with the city of Cheney. And so for this particular matter, I'll represent the city. Dan will represent Airway Heights. But because he occasionally might represent the city of Cheney, it's just our rules of professional conduct require that we get a waiver. And I I don't see any issue in this particular circumstance. I think our interests are aligned. And I I would recommend approval of the resolution.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mark. Any questions for Mark or?
Real quick, and Mike, you can probably answer this one.
Yeah.
Um, what is the, I guess, policy or procedure should his, I guess, or like the needs of Airway Heights diverge from our needs? And his ability to represent both?
Yeah, if he, and and that would be a question for Dan as an individual and as an attorney and and officer of the court. He would, he would have to withdraw if he ever got to the point where he thought that the conflict was so much that he could not adequately represent both parties, he would need to withdraw. In this case, he's never advised the city of Cheney on this particular matter. And and I think our interests are aligned, so I think it's a pretty low risk waiver.
Thanks. What's your pleasure?
Let's do it. I'll move for passive Resolution F dash three seven zero.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to pass Resolution F three seven zero, the conflict waiver with Ping Hamblin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Mark. Resolution F three seventy passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our action. However, I'm sure we've got some staff report.
We do. I want to start with what a fabulous Mayfest.
Yes.
From the organizers to the vendors, to the performers and to also to city staff that provided support. From our streets folks, our Parks and Rec folks, our police, fire. It was just such a well done event. Very excited to see where Mayfest has been and where it's going. Just a wonderful event. Interestingly enough, the fire department was doing an open house as part of Mayfest. And of course, we get a structured fire on that particular day. But kudos to the fire department for their very fast response and were able to put out the fire at the Eagle Point Apartments. It's it's a pleasure to watch those folks work and I will add in our police officers were on scene helping to evacuate residents and things. So just a tremendous response by the city. Secondly, please check your emails. I sent out a doodle poll for council retreat dates. I'm proposing doing it on a Saturday. If that doesn't fit in folks' schedule, we could do it on a series of maybe evening nights. I'm not sure what's going to work best with your schedule, but please respond to the poll. And if you have any additional comments, please just email me and we can we can get this thing scheduled. And for Mr. Postuma, who's going to be away, we can certainly zoom him in, however, and whenever we we actually pull us off. So that's that. Other than that, it's it's exciting that graduation is coming back. We're gearing up, working with Eastern on preparing for the festivities of that weekend. Todd and I actually have had the opportunity to meet with some representatives from Eastern and and we're going to really start kind of trying to work together on more things to move both the campus and the community forward together. So really some positive things going with with Eastern right now. And and kudos to their leadership up there for being, I will say, very community minded as they move forward. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, I want to echo that. Mayfest was fantastic this year. Wife and I spent a lot of time down there. It's just amazing how many people showed up this year. I I don't know about you guys, but it seemed like it was almost triple the size of the number of people that came down. But definitely took advantage of all the fun activities they have down there. Wife and I played in the cornhole tournament. The two games that we played, zero points. There, and we're not horrible. Well, the score will tell you we're, but they have like semi pro teams that travel around in these tournaments and just destroy a young, you know, little community. Anyway, we we had a fantastic time. Secondly, I wanted to shout out to Nate Lawton. He's one of our firefighters, new firefighters. He was just recognized from the EMS Council and and that's regional, right, chief? EMS Council is just Spokane region. He was he was the EMS Instructor of the Year for the EMS Council. So we were, we were there this morning. Yeah, so kudos to Nate. Candidate filing. I want to thank everybody that put their name on the candidacy for city council mayor. That's, thank you for your interest in serving this community. That's what we need, people that are community minded that want to serve. So thank you very much. And I look forward to the campaigns coming up. Should be fun. That's all I have. Council reports, Mr. Schmidt.
Same on. Festivities this last weekend. Getting the banners out. I love seeing that and the staff, the public works, getting all that. And. Was there any issue with the, uh, washed out, what they charged us like thirty-five hundred bucks for? Something to do with the barricades? That, that all went smooth?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they didn't. They didn't charge us. We did, we did have a Spokane traffic control do our, our, uh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we did have a.
They required that though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what that was. Okay, I get it.
Yeah, I did have a problem with, a little bit of a problem with DOT, but we got that one corrected through the past.
They didn't cost us any money.
Okay.
No, it's very, it was. It's going to probably grow, which is great.
So.
I can only do one night and I'm done. So I see, I got mine there early for.
I think I'm still recovering.
That was all good. And as you heard, Paul Works Committee meeting has been, uh, rescheduled to May twenty-second at seven AM. At, uh, rather than this Thursday, be week from this. Let's take a look at that commission. So I have, thank you.
Uh, Vince?
Very, very brief tonight. Uh, Mayfest was tremendous. I agree. We had a great time on Friday night. And I will see Mark and Paul next Thursday morning at Public Works. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Um, yeah, I wanted to draw people's attention to a groundwater study that's going to be going on this summer. It's being conducted by the geology department at Eastern, um, headed up by Dr. Chad Pritchard. There has been some PFAS, um, detected in some of the. Groundwater wells just outside of our city limits, so just off of Lance Hill. Um, and they do believe that it is migrating from our well number five. So they are asking for any property owners that are pretty much southwest of well number five, um, to contact Dr. Pritchard. About getting put on the list to have free well testing because they're trying to map. Where this contaminant is and where it's flowing. And then they'd like to come back, um, and give a report to, um, council and to Eastern. But the Eastern Foundation is the one that's paying for it. So the testing is free. So if you are, if you know anybody that lives down gradient, so basically southwest of that, um. Well, that contamin, that one that we know is contaminated, um, please reach out to Dr. Pritchard at Eastern, um, to get on that list.
Thanks, Jack.
Um, I guess I just reiterate, Mayfest was huge this year, which is great. Um, also, I know we voted on it. Um, for hotel motive motel tax last time, but we're going to be doing graduation party downtown Cheney. Um, and we hope to make that an annual event. Um, and that's going to be June fourteenth and it's for Eastern and, um, high school. Graduates and their families and community members. So should be fun.
Thanks, Daniel. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, uh, just a couple of things. Um, awesome job to the Cheney city staff with Mayfest. It was exceptional. Very well done. And I just want to say kudos to all of our city staff. And then, like Mark said as well, we have a structured fire in the middle of it and they pulled that off seamlessly as well. Just. Fabulous job all day long. Um, one other thing, I've had several questions from several employees. Asking me about the new changeover on payroll. And so was just wondering, could the council get an update about that changeover? Because I haven't heard anything about it and so don't really have an answer for them.
Yes, we, we, in fact, we met with some of the unions this morning and we talked about this at finance committee and. Um, we will provide an update with a sort of a new resolution. Uh, we would like to start this July first. And, and so we're basically bargaining the impact right now. But I, I think we're at a point where we all know this needs to happen. Um, it's just the transition and I think, um, I think everybody will be. In lockstep moving forward once we get this resolution, resolution through council. So. Um, we'll, we'll be working with Mr. Pond to draft that up and most likely presenting that on the first council meeting of June.
Thank you. Uh, that's all I have, Mayor. Other than was just wondering, is there going to be a, a pool? For the, uh, tickets for football games and basketball games for all city employees, staff and council. Uh, with the resolution that Steve had for us.
I would tell you what we've done in the past is just draw names out of the jar. Um, and that's primarily, I think, gone to city staff in the past, but, um, we could certainly throw council in there. I suppose.
Sounds great. I'd say we give it to the staff and, yeah, let's get out and support our Eagles. Go Eagles.
Thanks, Mark. Well, that concludes all the agenda items, so I'm going to conclude this meeting. He's not going to let me do this. He's not going to let me do this. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.